We'll call the meeting to order. And I'd like you to all stand and face the flag in a toward client joining us in the place of the meeting.
Let's listen to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Any other agenda items that we need to add here?
No, but there is one correction. If you go to the back page and go to number 13, consideration to approve a .5 FTE IMC department reduction, that needs to be changed to discussion because you moved it on last time, your practices to discuss them before you make any reductions. And so it would follow practice to do that next time.
But the next time we have until April 1?
April 1, but you have a board meeting on the 26th. I just want to make sure it was one of those items you moved over but didn't really discuss it, and I think that's important to do, so.
Other than that, any other additions or changes? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda with the change. Motion by Kurt, second.
Sure, I'll second it.
Wasn't that tough, was it, Rob? People taking turns. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carrie. No scheduled presenters this evening. Reports in communication, student. Grant, that's you.
Yep. All right, well, the first one, there were two big wins for extracurricular activities this last weekend. We have speech with South St. Paul. It was a big tournament. There were 30 teams, and they took home first place. And at the same time, they were missing five or six kids to robotics, which also placed eighth out of 62 teams at the Duluth Regional. And so that was both a cool experience for robotics, their first time at regionals, and also for speech, the largest tournament that they've been to so far, if I think is correct. Going on from that, we have spring sports are starting up this week, and baseball's starting Wednesday. And then on to some service activities. NHS gave 59 units of blood with its annual blood drive last Wednesday. Student council is organizing an event to go to Angel's Care Center, go and talk to the elderly there. And then Interact is doing more to raise money this Friday. And then on top of this, there's a national protest going on on Wednesday for 17 minutes of the 17 lives lost at the Florida shooting. And so what the policy is here at Cannon Falls, so students who go, they will have an unexcused absence for that time, but they're still allowed to exercise their, you know, free speech amendment right. So that's the situation that's going on there. Been a little bit of chatter about, I don't know if it's going to be a huge thing or whatever's going on there, but just that, that's what's going to happen, so.
What date?
That's this Wednesday, I believe, the 17th.
There's also one on the 14th, because this Wednesday, and the 17th is a weekend one that is, I think, probably going to be even more attended because it's on a weekend, but we'll see.
Okay, thank you. Okay, committee reports. Anyone have anything for the call this year?
We had a committee meeting for Big Hugh County Ed. And just a reminder to all of you that the all county board meeting is 5:00 PM on March 28th at the River Bluff Education Center. So everyone can go to town now at the dinner and everything. They had some neat stuff going on. They just got an outdoor learning lab proposal given to them, which they're going to consider putting into their schools where in their corridors on the inside, where the kids can do outdoor learning. And it's going to be an ego scout project, I remember, so. I thought that was pretty cool to have that brought in, and we'll be learning more about that.
And they did send everything out to us, you were invited to this dinner.
Yeah, so, RCT. Everybody.
I think there hasn't been a lot today, so if you can make it, make it. Anyone else? Any other committee reports?
The Ed Foundation Program Committee met last Thursday, and just discussed that they think they have six program requests, and they're doing that quarterly now. So those will be recommended to the full board this Thursday morning, so vote on that. And this will be the last meeting where they approve requests for this year.
Okay. What is their?
Silent auction?
What is their auction?
Oh, silent auction.
April 21st?
14.
14.
April 14th, yeah. What is the date?
Wait about.
That's right. What?
April 14th.
Yes.
Go first.
Silent auction date 14th. I don't know if you're still accepting donations or not.
Absolutely, yes.
Oh, still accepting donations for the silent auction.
Moving on, administrative board reports. Elementary school. Ken?
Yeah, all right. Sorry to get you back in time. You know, spring is definitely in full swing. Just an update, the last board report, I kind of showed some pictures of the flexible seating that's in our classrooms. We'll be finishing that hopefully by the end of March, implementing all of that. Approximately around $28,000 will be into classrooms by the end of March. So just extending a thank you to the community for raising those funds. And also that first $10,000 was matched by the Ed Foundation, so thank you to the Ed Foundation for giving us a good start there. Science night is coming up in April, so look forward to that date that's going to be coming up. And then just as a reminder, I think I've mentioned it to a couple of you before, but we are going to be trying something a little bit different, starting April 2nd, and it went out in my newsletter, but for the busing and drop off and pickup, trying something new. And so I've met with the bus garage and transportation to make sure we've got something in their mind that'll work for buses and just keeping safety at like a top priority. So I've met with Dave, and we kind of feel like we have a pretty good plan coming in for April 2nd to roll that out, so. That's all I have to know.
Waiting for the big snow clouds to melt, or someone to move them.
Open for the best. 50 degrees on Friday.
Okay. School, high school. Ken?
Just a couple of things. I wanted to give thanks and recognize Deb Clegg and Kirsten Hoffman for their work on the Minnesota Honor Society Blood Drive. They were very accommodating. Because of the snow day on Tuesday, our section large group band and choir competition got moved from Tuesday to Wednesday, so we took the blood drive space, and the blood drive was in here on Wednesday, so, and everybody was very accommodating. Thanks also to Sue and Mike and Peter for being prepared for a backup plan for that large group contest. I think that worked out well for everyone. We had a staff development day on Friday, March 2nd. I wanted to recognize Casey O'Donnell, who is our district's EL instructor. He did a presentation for the whole district staff on EL instruction, and I think that that was really good for everybody to hear. Also, Ashley Widener from the Hope Coalition did a presentation on student views of mental health and what we as staff can get from a student view of mental health. So thank you to both of them for those presentations. Those are both great. A couple other things. It's the end of quarter three, believe it or not, on March 23rd, and ACT testing for all juniors is on Tuesday, April 3rd, pretty much from 8:00 until 1:00 in the afternoon, so.
Okay. See activities?
He's now coaching. We should plug out there, we need softball junior high coaches. Don't love that JP got their coaching, but he's got to fill in when we don't have anybody, so.
Okay. Operations.
Well, as far as facilities and operations, it's been crazy for about the last month on weekends. I mean, just jam-packed every weekend with activities. And just when you think it's going to slow down, we got baseball starting and some of the spring sports starting tonight, as a matter of fact. So it's just going to continue to go up until, you know, until summer for sure. So very, very busy for the staff. I had a couple maintenance issues. I did include them in a report that I sent in earlier. I just didn't know if I'd make it or not. One of the major items was in the wood shop. We had a drain that came loose from the roof a week ago, last Saturday. And, you know, got a temporary fix for it. It still needs more repairs, but we're going to be able to get through till spring. We need all the snow and water to get off the roof. Other small items, we had some issues over at the CCC with some sewer drains and stuff like that. So we do have some maintenance items that are popping up unexpectedly, unfortunately.
$100?
Which item?
Go item one.
Item one, the drain, you're probably looking around $15,000, and that's just an estimate and a guess. We have a shower issue right now that needs to be dealt with. You're probably looking at another $10,000 there. We have a dishwasher issue that needs to be resolved. CCC drain issue took three days to clear, another $1,500. Just things just popping up.
Dishwasher, we did get three bids on that. Wasn't the cheapest one $42,000?
Yeah, about $45,000 for the cheapest, correct. Yep. It went up as far as almost $70,000.
Is the extra money we've got, the food program, have you been planning on spending on there?
No. The food program right now is negative $5,000. It comes out of facilities. A dishwasher would be facilities, not food service.
And that's something we pushed back to this year, didn't we?
Correct, yeah. We discussed it at the beginning of the year, but we pushed it back, and we're going to, you know, we're looking at this summer. It makes it really tough, you know, we have the food program, I mean, they're just always running over there, so.
Dave, is that with insurance or without insurance for that drain problem?
There's no insurance.
Drain, there is no insurance.
Insurance wouldn't cover it, no. I talked to the company and...
I talked as well, and then we looked at, oh, I can't remember the name of the roof. There's a warranty on the roof. Still garland.
Garland, yeah.
But this also wasn't really the roof, it was the pipes that go into the roof, so it's not a roof issue.
Yeah, and it was literally underneath, inside the wood shop is where it came apart. So...
Did the drain bowl come apart?
The bowl's still attached. The pipe came detached from the bowl. That's what we have to wait till spring for, is to actually replace the bowl, which will mean we'll have to cut out part of the roof, probably a four foot by four foot, and completely replace it. Just used PVC and had an emergency crew in that night because we had storms coming a couple days after that with a lot of rain and snow. You know, barely got it back together before that hit, so.
And the shower issue was what?
We have some, down by the FIED area, by the fieldhouse, we have some showers that are not working. They're, the design of them is they're controlled by air pressure, and when you don't get a lot of use out of them, they dry up, they don't work. We've repaired them a couple times. We're looking at doing a permanent fix to be able to repair them so they'll always work for years to come.
Like real lines?
Pardon me?
Like hard pipeline?
Well, more of a spring operated instead of air.
Right.
Kind of like we have in our other locker rooms that have worked the same for 20 years. And when you don't use these ones with air a lot, they dry up. They don't get a lot of use, but when you need them, you need them. So, yeah, there's definitely some maintenance things I think everyone should be aware of that are coming up here.
Nothing new. I'll write to say nothing new. Jake, if we jump back in your direction, you got anything?
Not really.
I told them we were playing ball.
Yeah, playing ball. First day of spring sports. Numbers looked really good across all sports, and today's always hectic. Shout out to Molly Strauss, she works with me in the office. She's at home today with two sick kids and was working like crazy from home just to get everybody cleared in time for practice, so. Also want to say congrats to the robotics team with a fun weekend, I'm sure they'll hit on that, so. Busy day.
Okay, thank you. Sue's report.
Yeah, I've got a few things to pass these out if you want. A couple this way. Nothing new. Grant, if you can make sure Nora gets one. A lot of things right now, every spring is a lot of legislative type things. Right now Governor Dayton has basically found $21 million for safe schools. What's really interesting about this, though, is when schools are like ours and they're really updated, they want to look at different sorts of funding. So I was glad to see last Friday, it looks like it'll be $18 per pupil unit towards school safety. So it doesn't matter how many or what you've got done in your district, it should be equitable across the board. So we're looking at, tonight the safety committee met, and we're looking at some training for our teachers and maybe the Atlas program, making sure that our staff is feeling good about the things that they can do if an intruder was to come into the building. 20% of all children, it's been proven, have some form of dyslexia, and I think it is really great that our representatives are looking at different programs to make sure that our teachers have that training. The problem with that is they're not attaching any funding. So it's an unfunded mandate. So if I have 82 teachers and they all need to be trained in something, and we're required to do it by law, I think that there should be some funding. So when you get my letters to Senator Goggins or Representative Haley, that's what these things are about. It's really important that we're having our voice there. I support getting our teachers trained in this. I don't support unfunded mandates, and you see that in a lot of my letters. A lot of technology things are going on right now up there, and student data privacy type things. The letter that you just saw from me today is actually with Mr. Sosker, the former superintendent. He's working really hard on teachers being able to get into schools without passing that final test, because they're so backlogged up at the state. And if you see some examples, did any of you look at some of those I sent out to you today?
Yes.
They're impossible. I mean, it's just not, it's just not right. And so there's some, there's a lot of conversation about that, like when can they, before they get their teacher license, especially amidst the teacher shortage. And then this morning I was able to go up to the Capitol and present on this, and I was really proud to do it, some things about our graduation rate. We currently don't have a perfect graduation rate, and it's because students, after they're 18 and they go to a program at GCD till they're 21, they count against our graduation rate. Lori actually found a student, wasn't she a foreign exchange student? I mean, there were just silly things that were in the system. And so today we presented, and there is good legislation out there, and I think it's going to go through. To allow the kids to graduate from Cannon Falls at 18, not impact our graduation rate, and still allow the funding to go over GCD. So some pretty exciting stuff coming out. None of it money this year, but a lot of good conversation. A lot of things about school safety, as we expected, so. I'll just keep sending out things as they come in, and if you have any questions on them, don't hesitate to ask.
Public input is up. Due to data privacy concerns, a speaker may address the criticism court, an individual may not, against an individual employee during public input. Individual complaints or concerns should be handled privately. With administrators under the superintendent, comments from the visitors may be informational in nature, but should not exceed three to five minutes per issue. The board won't engage in discussion, nor should it in those three to five minutes, but we'll take the information back and find appropriate answers. As part of protocol, it is unacceptable for any speaker to slander or engage or have any character assassination at a public board meeting. If there are people that wish to speak during public forum, this is your opportunity to do so. I would ask if there are several people speaking on the same topic that you kind of measure concerns into one or two speakers. Otherwise, some of these concerns keep coming over and over again. So just for ease of participation, I guess, we would ask that you, if you've got multiple people speaking on the same topic, that you can merge your thoughts and have somebody speak for you. Having said that, does anyone wish to address the board about anything of specifics regarding the district? Yes?
Hi, Holly Wintert, and I want to talk about the .5 reduction in the IMC. We're in the IMC, and you can see what a beautiful space this is, but the reason it is a beautiful space is because we have a librarian. And if you do the .5 reduction, you're going to seriously, you're going to seriously reduce our literacy rates. Having a good librarian and having especially our young adult fiction area and all of our fiction is key to us, I'm an English teacher, is key to us having good literacy scores because we need choice as well as the stuff that's in our curriculum. But if you cut .5, it means we have no librarian at all. Not just a person to check out books, because people can check out books, but a person to actually select them and read them and put them in the right kid's hands. The right book in the right kid's hands can change a reader, and I've seen it many times. And books that were popular four years ago are not popular anymore, so we need a constant person bringing in stuff and putting it in our hands and doing book talks and having the materials available. And it doesn't work to just put something on a Kindle, because if they can't see the physical thing, they don't read. And so I would like you to consider that that would be a permanent librarian, there'd be no librarian at the high school, and we need strong readers at the high school especially.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? The door is closing. Okay, moving on. New business. Under new business, this is the topics we're all here for tonight. The first, board chairman to give a summary on superintendent's mid-year report. Beth reported on her goals each year. Our superintendent is required to give us her goals. We exchange goals for the mutual good of the district. And in past process, it's gone, it's gone to be almost a whole year process. We always seem to be harking back to the eval, and sometimes it takes a great deal of our time. Lori was kind enough to make that a more concise thing for us. So at mid-year, we asked Beth last week to speak to her eval and where she is on those for our mid-year. And at this point in time, we respond as to how we felt about that. I asked the board members to contribute, and if they had anything to say in response to that, this would be a good time. Otherwise, we feel that you're doing an exemplary job. The goals that we set forth and that you have, you have strived to do, many of them are already completed. And I'm not sure if anyone else wants an opportunity to say much or anything at all, but the reports back...
I sent you comments, didn't get my comments?
The reports back that I have got have been, have been very well. So keep doing what you're doing, and thank you for your service. Anyone else have anything to say? Otherwise, we'll just move on. And we will. You know, when we have, when we float referendums out to our community, we're asking them for help for projects. Sometimes they're bond issued projects, sometimes they have things to do with our funding or lack of funding. As we've presented to you many, many times, we're not at the top of that funding list, and sometimes it's a very political game that we have to participate in as a school district. Funding has a wide variety as to how we, how we get our money from the state. But at this time, we're getting approximately $9,500 a student.
$9,600.
Okay. So at $9,500 a student, each year we try to project the number of students that we're going to have, and that's where our revenue lies in great part. But this year's K class, soon to be first graders, and the incoming class, both have created shortages of students, therefore shortages of revenue. And at 25 students, I'm just throwing that number out there as a pretty close estimate, I guess, over the last two years, we're pushing, well, whatever the math would be there, and it would certainly be close to $250,000. We have to account for that, and we absolutely know the issues that we create when we have to make decisions on whether educators have to be reduced, whether programs have to be reduced, extracurriculars have to be reduced. But we're very familiar with the process. Several of us have been in here for a few of those. I personally have been in ones where we push $500,000 in cuts. And those were at a time when we were, when we could reach statutory operating debt, so those were absolutely needed to keep us afloat. There's been, I think all of us have probably gotten the information from constituents about what they feel is necessary and what, what they feel like we should be doing and not doing. And we take those, we take those to heart, for sure. One of the things that struck me is when we read the paper this past week, and we see one of our class leaders, one of our past graduates, Ryan Foster. When we look at education, we look at the scholastics, and we look at the extracurricular as making what teachers have told me is the whole child. We also know that when students walk out this door, the ones that leave at 3:05 statistically and historically don't do as well as the kids who participate in the activities that we offer in our school. Having said that, we have to make some decisions about where we go with our extracurricular, and not to minimize it, because it's got maybe not equal importance, but great importance to us. So as we move forward here, the discussion part of things will be here, and it might be brief because we did extensive discussion before. But just to set the ground rules, we do have to make up for the loss of some students. As we add kids back in, and our hope is with demographic studies, we will add kids back in. But for the time being, we owe it to our community to at least look at reductions that are commensurate with the amount of money that we're down. If we stay at 7% or 7.5%, does it make a lot of difference to us? Well, you heard what our maintenance director has said. There's some significant things for us in this upcoming year, and actually, there's significant things for us every year. So one eye on the potential things that we have to deal with, the other eye on making revenue, making expense cuts, if you will. And we know we'll come back with some additions with time, but it may not be at this time. We're going to go through these items 2 through 14, with the exception of a discussion item on 13. And we haven't had practice in this for a few years, but off we go. Number two is consideration to approve the technology budget reduction and the K2 school G reduction. Guess I'm just going to do something.
Just a reminder, that sounds good. Just a reminder on this one, that it is 10% of the overall technology budget. And then as the last discussion, you added the K2 school G, which sounded very supported by the teachers. They thought they could do without that. So the total is $32,600.
As we go through this, I would like to see a motion in a second, because sometimes we discuss items, then we do our motion in a second, and we discuss again, and sometimes it can get dragged out, if you will. So I would look for a motion to accept or approve the reduction. Motion by Kurt.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Rob. Team, is there any discussion here? All in favor of the budget reduction for technology as shown, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the transportation supply reduction of 16,000. Beth?
Just a review on this. Because of the new buses that we've been trying to get into rotation, we're able to pull some money from the supply budget, and we won't be buying a new bus next year, we will be purchasing a used bus. If this is approved tonight, I will bring forward the next five-year plan for transportation that Rob has been at every meeting on, and we'll re-present that so we know kind of where we're at. So the money that you're saving here is from the supply budget and purchasing a used bus instead of a new bus.
Would look for a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry.
I'll second it.
Second by Katie. Other discussion?
Is this considered just a long-term cut, or is this a hard cut across the period?
Well, you're reducing that supply budget for this year, so I would call this one a soft one. It's temporary. The used bus, it's hard to estimate, you know, we talked about that, could we get three years out of a used bus, or can we get five years? I don't, I don't know for sure. So I would consider this a soft.
And does this include my, are we looking at used vans? So we stagger those between, is that three vans?
We can't do the used vans because we don't get as many years out of them, and there just aren't any there. They hold their value so well.
Right.
And remember vans, they're used for special education. You get 20% back from them every year, so the vans, we're not as worried about. Because they're used for special education, you get that reimbursement.
I just remember we thought that three vans would be due in 12 years again.
Yep, that's still in the budget. We decided not to put that on there because, how do you say, you're not going to transport a specialized kid. That's why we took it off, we just didn't think there was any way around it.
Hey Beth, as we go through this, can you just specify the hard or soft types?
You bet, I can do that, sure.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the transportation reduction, supply reduction, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the telecommunication reduction. Consideration to approve the telecommunication reduction.
This would be for the administrators. Josh and I currently pay for ours, but the rest of the administrators will start paying half of their phones. This is, I think this is gonna help a lot of things. If you make a personal call on a work phone, all of those types of things. This would be considered a hard cut because you wouldn't, it's an expense that you wouldn't bring back.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Kurt, seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? Jerry, this was one that you had some comment on last time. Does this fit with what you-
Yeah, you know, they're looking to reduce sixty-seven hundred dollars in it. And I wasn't sure who all had phones for the district. Didn't all have a reading in the district need a phone. Knew that, felt the superintendent and administrators needed one. I didn't know how many others were out there, but I think this is a good fit. I don't know that anybody in the administration team who carries a phone has any issues paying the dollars that they have to pick up on their own. I'm satisfied, the cut, I'm satisfied they gotta look at their phones because they think it's a necessary tool.
Anyone else? All in favor of the telecommunication reduction, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the reduction of no new devices for K-one.
This came out of the technology meeting. We're gonna go back to the style of when we first got them, using iPads on a cart or something like that. I don't know if you'd call this a hard or a soft cut. I guess I would call it a hard cut because there's no plans in the five-year tech plan to replace those. So in my opinion, that would be a hard cut. I do feel that it's supported by the K-one teachers as well because they're still gonna have access to devices. They just won't be taking them home or having one per child. So although I fought this one in the beginning, I can see why it makes sense now.
Okay.
I'd like a motion to approve the reduction of no new devices for K-one.
Motion by Rob.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry. Discussion? All in favor of the reduction of no new devices in K-one, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the elimination of the AP position and posting and hiring a dean of students.
Just as a reminder, this is what we attempted to do last year, but Mr. Bell left on August twenty-eighth. Our hands were tied on what we could do and our options. We feel that there are a lot of great upcoming administrators out there that would really look forward to this experience. I know this is how I started and it's a great opportunity for people. So although I feel like this puts more on administrations' hands and workload, I still think it's doable.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Brenda.
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion?
So what's, I mean, dean of students, what's the difference?
It's pretty common in bigger districts. A dean of students would be on the teacher contract. Same contractual days, they wouldn't work, like the principals right now work two-hundred-and-twenty-five days. So they basically get July off. A dean of students would be a hundred-and-eighty-four days, possibly, you know, a few other days paid through a stipend or something like that. But it's mostly insurance and some of the benefits that come along with the administrative contracts. You're on the teacher contract instead.
Other discussion? All in favor of the elimination of AP and the posting and hiring of a dean of students, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the curriculum reduction, no K-five textbook purchases in FY nineteen.
This would be a soft cut. It's still need to be looked at down the road. But the K-five math curriculum is good and alive. And our teachers are doing some great things with what they have and feel that we can hold that off for one year. So it's a soft cut, but it is sixty-five thousand dollars.
Motion? Motion by Jerry.
I'll second.
Seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? All in favor of the no textbook purchases in nineteen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the reduction in organizational memberships.
These would come out of the district office. Truthfully, I get signed up for these committees and I end up having to serve as their chairman or something. And if I can't belong to them, I can't be their chairman. So I would like to reduce the membership of twelve hundred dollars. Oh, sorry, was I supposed to be nicer?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Kurt. No, you weren't. Other discussion? All in favor of the organizational membership reduction, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
If you want to put it in your notes, it's the AASA. I already belong to MASA. So that's where that reduction's coming from, if you're looking exactly from there.
It's all alphabet soup to me.
Yeah, it really does become a-
Consideration to approve the reduction of classroom furniture location, rotation.
This would be a soft cut. I've worked really hard with the administrators to try to find ten thousand dollars a year to improve our facilities, classrooms. I know that they're working really hard with the Ed Foundation and some great things that might happen there. So this would definitely be considered a soft cut, depending on where that proposal goes. But the administrators have decided that we think we can hold off for one year. It's hard to do because some of our furniture is really falling apart. But I think we can hold off for one year. Soft cut.
I'll make a motion to accept the reduction of classroom furniture rotation. Motion by Rob.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor of the reduction of classroom furniture rotation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the reduction of advisor pay for candles.
This one is hard. Keep in mind that the lantern is alive and well in the middle school and high school. We've got some pretty dedicated elementary teachers that wanted to get going on a candle as well. If this reduction goes through, it really does need to continue, at least through community ed. And Jake, you said that would be a perfect place for it to be. The conflict that I think you'll have with that is that that means elementary kids are paying to be a part of the candle and the high school kids in the lantern are not. The difference with that is, a high school student may not do that because it's kind of considered an extra. Where an elementary child, this might be the only thing that they have, you know, or, you know, there's fifth and sixth grade, or fifth grade robotics and things like that. But this wasn't talked about a lot last time. And so I just really want to make sure you understand that the advisor isn't here tonight. But they're very passionate about this. But if it's reduced, I really hope that Jake can work it out through community ed because these kids really do like this program. It's just hard to pay an advisor on something you're not generating any revenue on. But they're doing a great job, a really nice job.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Other discussion?
Just out of curiosity, how many are in the program?
Twenty-four or twenty-seven, is it Jennifer?
I think it's twenty-seven.
Okay, twenty-seven. They're not always consistent, you know, like they may have something else going on or something like, it's not like you're required to be there. But I gave you the link last time. You can see some of the things they're doing.
I went down there last semester as a part of the lantern and worked with the kids. And, you know, they're doing good work running around, taking photos of the iPads. And then, you know, writing articles, which is good to start them young, especially with writing, so.
Does that, if we go through community ed with that, does that set precedents for other programs out there that, you know, while community ed's paying for this program going forward, other programs-
We would be paying for the parent, this turns it over to the parents.
Okay.
Anytime you move something over to community ed, the parents pay a fee. They also get their fee and then the administrator gets paid, depending on how many kids enroll. It's actually, and Jake could probably allude to this a little more, it is extremely common in elementaries. And in the big schools, that's how they run all their junior high sports too. I mean, they run everything through there. It's a different funding mechanism, so it's a little, it's basically pay to play. Whatever it costs to run the program, is, am I saying it right?
Actually, the spring play was a reduction a handful of years ago. And we've been running the community ed for, and I don't think you probably know the difference. But probably the advisor salary is the biggest difference, we just, isn't as high.
So the lantern is still running?
The lantern and the torch are both, the torch is the middle school paper. The lantern is the high school paper, and they're both extremely active. Every time they win an award or anything, I've sent it over to you. If you look at our TV screens that are around the building, a lot of that is running through our lantern. Should follow them online. They're very, very good.
Does it generate revenue?
It does not.
Okay, so it'd be the same situation as the candles, just under three.
That's what I'm trying to get to. Just keep in mind that we are paying an advisor for the lantern and the torch. They're one and the same. But you're reducing something that is at the elementary. The difference being, and Grant, help me out here, a high school student isn't probably gonna pay to be in the lantern. Where an elementary child might look at that as a neat opportunity and they may pay to go through community ed to do it. But I don't, I don't know that.
So maybe you looked at it as a-
That's why I'm bringing it up.
Jake, did you say it was common in other community eds for to have a newspaper in elementary or just to have fees?
We can't find another elementary paper.
Yeah, I have not heard of elementary newspapers.
Yeah, I think it's a really big program and it's really great to instill that, those skills in kids at a young age because I think a lot of kids are afraid to write when they try to write.
And they do make it really fun.
Yeah, and I think it would drop off if it was put through community ed and their parents had to pay for that, so.
What Beth was referring to is the metro area.
What?
What Beth was referring to earlier, when it goes through community ed, they're called clubs. So it's like the junior high sports, you know, through community ed, it's called a club. So this would be the candle club, and that's how it's divided on as wherever the-
Yeah, I probably shouldn't say community ed like that. It is more the club, paid a way.
Right. So you just divide amongst the students that participate.
Fees would be manageable.
Yes. I mean, something like this would be fifty dollars a candle if you're driving out.
Anything else? We have a motion and a second for the reduction of advisor pay for the candle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Me.
Five, one, with Brenda. As the one. One thing we didn't talk about in the beginning was, on our list here is three-hundred-and-seven thousand dollars worth of cuts for reductions. After our last conversation, the percentage that we charged admin with was closer to two forty.
Originally it was two ninety, and now you've got us down to two forty.
And at two forty, that number would be what, about what percentage? Budget, I'm sorry. Where would we be on our budget, about eight percent?
It puts you about eight point two, or seven point eight if you go down to the two forty.
Two forty, okay. So much the same as where we are now. Okay, moving down, item eleven, consideration to approve the reduction of an assistant dance coach.
Well, I thought you said the difference between the two ninety and the two thirty. But I could be, I'll always ask questions like that, and we don't have anything for us.
Are we asked questions where there is no answer?
So at two forty, we'd be over nine percent.
No. At two ninety-one, we would have been at nine point something like that.
Two ninety-one, but we went down to two forty.
Two thirty-seven would be nine percent.
Would you like me to go grab it, so we can get it for sure?
Which did the board agree on, with the nine percent?
Nine percent. Nine percent, two forty.
That was the initial, I know we talked about different levels. If we were to drop it down, what would it look like? So we gave the investigation-
I would have gone.
A few numbers to look at.
Well, we gotta be careful because we're at seventy-five thousand. And I expect to make this last comment too.
Well, it's important to know that if we approve all of these reductions, everything on here, including the discussion item, we would be at three oh seven. And we weren't. We backed off of that number, I think, last time in conversation. So just wanted to make that note. Again, I put my, go to my mouth. Good thing. Consideration to approve the reduction of an assistant dance coach, once more. Talk us through this.
Probably one of the only, I won't call it easy, but easier ones on here. This is based completely off registration numbers. The dance coach, head dance coach is fine with this. They don't need a third coach with, based on their numbers currently.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the reduction of the assistant dance coach.
Motion by Rob.
I'll second.
Second, Kurt? Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve a point four zero FTE art department reduction.
Well, these next three are very difficult for me. I think everyone knows how I feel about reducing staff. Absolute hardest part of my job completely. I'm gonna just review all three so that you understand the pros and the cons. Consideration to approve a point four art. One, we've got an amazing art teacher that would be impacted on this. Scheduling will be extremely difficult because the current high school teacher would have to go to the elementary. I don't know how Jennifer will make that schedule work, but she'll work her magic if it has to happen. The other piece in this is most people cannot work a point six job and afford to stay in teaching. So if the current art teacher was to leave us, it would be extremely, especially with the teaching shortage we have right now, extremely hard to fill. I also think all three of these positions, you're talking about extremely talented individuals that don't just teach. And I guess that's why I get so upset when there's our teaching positions on here because it's our bread and our butter. This is, it's a really big deal to reduce teachers. I wish there was a way we could reduce new first, you know, I wish there was a way to do that because I just, I just think all of these are really difficult. The point five art, or point five IMC, I know you're gonna move to next week. I think that's smart to do because you haven't had a chance to discuss it. I think Ms. Winjet did a really nice job of kind of talking about the impact in this room. The other piece of this is Mr. Hodges, you know, wasn't, we weren't prepared for this. So we went into registration kind of looking at it a different way. I think he would change what he offers if we knew that this was gonna be a reduction. So doing that next year would be extremely difficult. And on top of that, again, we have a nineteen-year employee that is nothing but here every day. She's one of our first employees to arrive every morning. I know that because we fight over who gets the newspaper in the morning first and picking up off the curb. So again, a really tough spot for us to be in. And then the first grade reduction, I'll just echo what Ms. Chappie said. Anytime you're talking about primary teachers, it is hard. I don't know the clientele that's in kindergarten, but what they're telling us is that it is a tougher group. That's just a really tough position too, anytime you're reducing a section. So I guess I gave you more cons than I did pros because I can't really think of many pros. But that's what I know on those three. If you need any clarification, I can try to do that. But I've said my piece enough on reducing teachers and trouble with it.
I'll make the motion to approve the point four art department reduction.
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Discussion?
Could you be more specific, and this could be from Tim too, as to what that's gonna look like down the road again, going into next year? What are we losing? I mean, what are we losing?
Well, the point four reduction was based off of high school registration requests. So what I see right now is that there will be one class at the high school level that we won't offer that is, we currently do and we usually do offer that class. And then it's, would be a matter of just scheduling between Ms. Chappie and I, figuring out how to make a schedule work for a teacher that's traveling between two buildings. So the, at the middle school, high school, that reduction would impact high school classes. We would still offer art in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade.
So by offering it in one class, are we essentially cutting out more kids from participating because of the restriction of time? And are we gonna be reducing it again because it won't put into their class schedule?
Can't answer that. What we offer at the high school is purely based off of student requests. Right now, I don't have enrollment that's impacting student requests. I have fluctuating requests in different, numbers of requests in different departments- just based on student interest right now. So will we have more requests for art down the road? It's very possible. I can't answer that question because it seems to change every year and I really don't have any way of predicting where those lower numbers are going to be because over the last four years, they've been in, you know, three different departments at different times. It's just kind of what our students are interested in taking. So again, the way I'm looking at it, based off of, this is not based off of scheduling, this is based off just looking at student requests for courses. There's one class that will be impacted and, and we won't offer that next year at the high school level.
So basically one half-time person for both schools going forward if this was to be put into place?
Two classes, a point four.
Two classes.
We would have a point six art teacher.
But in the elementary, is it the elementary position or?
The elementary would stay full-time. It's the high school, but the elementary art teacher is impacted because of senior.
Other discussion?
What class, what if you're, is it just numbers that changes?
Uh, no, it would be a particular class. It would be photography at this point.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for the reduction of the art department by point four. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Kurt? Passes by a five, one. Is Kurt in the negative or the no? Discussion to approve, or discussion of the point five FTE IMC department. The original conversation was a reduction. I can start the discussion. It was maybe the one item here that when we were originally given our sheet of possibles, that this wasn't on. And it has been kind of, I guess, on the fringe of discussion, but it's a... I can absolutely tell when, when I'm sent things as the board chair and they send preliminary, here's what round one looks like, it wasn't on there and that, that... So hard for administrators to step out of their skin and they could, and make a, a recommendation that you can tell they just don't agree with, but pushed by the board of directors to make, to make a reduction. This wasn't on there. I don't believe it should be on there. And we can talk about discussion and we should, but it would be my hope that we could just pull it off entirely and forget about it for this year.
Yeah, I mean, this wasn't recommended by the administration after the finance meeting. I think it was just, the question was asked, you know, what's possibility or is that a possibility? But I think since we decided to go with nine percent, that's something that we, you know, we should be able to take on. It depends on other things, of course. It's a very important position too, so many, like all the, all the kids, it's a resource for all the kids and all the teachers as well. So it's very important to, to reading scores and everything else, but it's, it's a sector for kids and it's important to have some of that.
I guess on that. Beth or Tim, I guess, is my question. What, what else does she do other than be the library?
Tim would be the perfect person to say that, but she does teach some middle school, middle school tech classes as well. There's other things like if, if a teacher needs a specific lesson or books ordered or anything like that, she's, she's a resource for the teachers as well. Tim, if you want to add anything on that, but the middle school tech classes are the, the classes.
Correct. So like art, you know, this impacts my middle school classes and although those classes seem like they're kind of elective type classes, they're really not because we require our middle school kids to take these quarter classes or trimester classes. So my media specialist teaches sixth grade typing and technology and eighth grade technology. You know, that is vital stuff just because of all the media literacy that kids are required to have nowadays. There's, you know, probably the biggest thing is just support for the academics that go on in, in our classrooms on a daily basis. If a teacher needs, is doing a research project, our media specialist is one of the people that our teachers go to as a, as a resource to bring in and talk to kids about research skills, to do some preliminary work and to give, you know, good advice to our students and our teachers on what we offer in-house and then ways to get information outside of the Cannon Falls High School Library. You know, probably one of the, the biggest things that we would lose in this is just, we have a great catalog in our library that is up to date and it's got lots of books that are current and Mr. Rosier does an awesome job about finding books that our kids specifically in grades six through twelve are interested in reading and keeping those up to date. And if that part of things goes away, there will be nobody to provide that, you know, to provide those skills to us. I, I don't have the ability, I don't have the knowledge base to go in and, and order library books, nor does anybody really on our staff have the, the skill set or the time to do that. So that's a, a big thing that we would lose, so, and I don't know who would do that. So there's, there's a lot of backend support that Mr. Rosier provides for, for all of our teachers and for our students. I mean, you know, we talk about kids that have behavior problems and trying to connect kids with an adult to mentor them through some of those social, emotional issues. We have just as many or more students who have issues with reading and Mr. Rosier is that point of contact for those kids when they come in and don't have any idea on what they like to read or whether they like to read or not, she can always find something for them to read. And that's, that would be a shame, in my opinion, to lose that for our district.
I want to add on things too, I know you guys don't realize this, but we do meet ten, twelve or more times before that list comes out. One of the pieces that we're unsure of right now is the Good Hugh County Ed District currently provides us with an instructional coach at the high school, middle school level. That funding is, is switching, the instructional coach is most likely going to be a behavior coach right now. And that's coming through some of the mental health money and things like that. So we will no longer, we don't know yet, but it doesn't look like we're going to have that instructional coach at the middle school, high school level. Even though she's employed through Good Hugh County Ed District, she's here a majority of her time. I think it's kind of like a double whammy, you know, some of those resources that she's helping kids with, I think our librarian could help with too. To have both of those go in the same year, if you're wondering why we didn't have it on the original list, you know, waiting a year at least to see what, what transpires through GCD made sense to us, so.
What kind of utilization is there in the IMC here? To hear a lot and to check out a lot of books, just kind of getting an idea?
She's here, I don't think she'd mind answering that question.
I wouldn't mind. No, we have, at least every hour of the day, there's fifteen to twenty-five, thirty kids in here using the facilities, the tables, looking at different things. I don't have a specific number of checkouts, but every English class requires the student to have a book with them for reading time if they have something that's not done. Ninth grade, they still read at the beginning of every hour. And then we do some liaison stuff with the public library in ninth grade. I guess every student normally has a book.
Well, I, we had a conversation, I thought, a while ago, about not all schools have libraries anymore. How do they handle the situation we're talking about? What do they do differently than that, or what do they miss?
I think they have FTEs that are in the English department. You know, they have, might have a para-professional or someone else helping out with that, but they certainly don't have librarians that are teaching classes as well. That's very unusual that she has that licensure and able to do that. I think other schools, their FTEs are still hired because they'll hire an additional, like our instructional coach or something like that in the area of literacy, so it's just kind of where you put that FTE. Would you agree with that, Tim?
Yeah, I, I guess my answer would be I really don't have any idea.
I sur, I surried the HBL and that's kind of why.
The, the basic easy piece, you know, checking books in and out is handled by para-professionals or by classroom teachers that bring their classes down here or by super, you know, supervisory type positions that teachers have. We have to do a little bit of that anyway to cover, for prep hour. But I, I, I haven't given it a lot of thought about how I would cover that yet.
Well, I like the idea of just holding, and we're not going to vote on this one tonight, but seeing we're at, after you vote on all the other cuts, we're looking at that, but if it's necessary.
We can actually do whatever the board requires us to do. I mean, we can, we can continue with this as a discussion item or we can, we can even change that item to be taken off the agenda if you so choose. And that's entirely up to you. You know, when we talk about these, these type of things, it's always kind of unique, we always say, what do others do? And that's, that's legit, but you know, we may have some specialists here that others don't. We may have some programs here that others don't. It's what makes us who we are and not Kenyan Wanamango or Triton. You know, we're all different there, so I think we use that all the time and I'm the first one to step in and say, I wonder what the others are doing, but it doesn't always make it right. So tell me what you'd like to do with this, continue on as a discussion item for the future or what?
I'll make a motion to table it. No, until next meeting.
So make it a voting item next month or next meeting?
No, we don't need a vote in a second, it's, it stays on as a discussion item to be dealt with at the next meeting. Correct?
Got that, Lauren?
Can I ask a question?
That's what I said.
Sure. Is there, is it like we just table it? Is there actually any research that other folks do or?
It's my call, I guess, I don't know. I'd like to have the time if I need to or want to, and anyone else can too.
Well, fair enough, that's a good question, just asking.
Yeah, give you the time to think it through, just like you did on the other items.
We don't know what we're doing the next one either. So if we all sit her down, we still got a hundred thousand plus, a hundred and eight thousand on the board here, no. All of a sudden, we're down to seven percent because we took one completely off and we didn't approve the next one. Are we prepared for that? I'm not.
Valid, it's valid. Okay, it continues as a discussion item we've discussed. Moving down to item fourteen, consideration to approve a one point oh FTE first grade reduction. Ms. Geese, I will let you.
Well, I've kind of gone through all three, but if you have any other things, you know, we pride ourselves in small class sizes. I don't know, Jennifer, you have anything you want to add as well?
Sure, three sections puts the teachers at twenty-two and twenty-three in their classroom.
Those numbers again are?
Twenty-two and twenty-three. And your board guidelines goes up to twenty-five per classroom before an additional hire is needed. That means approximately close to seven new students. We've averaged nine, maybe more this year. You know, I'd like to be able to say that a reduction at this level is not ideal. That, I mean, I have to go by board guidelines as well, so I'm kind of, my hands are kind of tied here. I wasn't here when board guidelines were developed, but hopefully I'll be here when they're revisited.
With four sections then, what, how many students per class?
Four sections.
Sixteen sentences. That's wonderful, but is that, that's below our recommendations or?
Is it different?
I remember when we were talking about these, there were a lot of studies out there that over numbers definitely show a decrease in scores, but at a certain level, it doesn't show any increase in scores. When you go wonder, I think it was seven, eighteen, there was no studies that really, and the dynamics are huge. But I think we had quite a few reports that came in that's different from all over the country.
I think, I, I, you're exactly right, but I do think what they're trying to stress in this situation is we have really, and Sharon's probably going to know the number, but the number of special ed kids in the current kindergarten class and some of that, that's where this has kind of come from. I, I don't think our first grade teachers would be arguing against us if they, the, maybe the group coming in was a little bit different. So Sharon, how many kids are we still in assessment?
In kindergarten, going into first grade, well, I think there are six kids in kindergarten going into first grade. I think there are two in assessment right now.
So there could be a possibility of eight.
Then do they get a pair if they're on special ed students?
Depends on their level.
So is it time for discussion here for you to do this?
Oh, yeah, okay, so, so I can, so personally.
I'll make the call.
There's a motion by Jerry.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob.
I did want to speak to this one. I personally think that twenty-two and twenty-three in a class size of this age group is too many. I personally have been down there as far as, like, not with the specific age group, but, you know, in years of experience of being in the classroom. If K one through two, I feel is when most of like the special needs are discovered. There might be a lot of kids who have behaviors who are just plain, they're frustrated, but they're frustrated because they can't, they don't understand what the teacher's telling them when they're learning to read or all of these little things haven't come into place yet. And I feel like when you're throwing twenty-two to twenty-three kids in a classroom, there's going to be a couple of kids maybe that slip through those cracks and don't get, those things don't get discovered at an earlier age and they'll, they'll get discovered later. I think that with this, it would be really nice if we didn't reduce their sections until third grade. There's a cognitive change there, there's that cognitive ability of these kids when they're in K through two to three through five is very different. I think they can handle being in a larger class, but that's just, that's just my, my two cents on it, so.
We've thrown out guidelines a few times and I think somebody told me twenty-fourteen. I don't even remember us discussing guidelines.
Really, I worked really hard on that presentation, how do you not remember it? Nora remembers it, it was one of my best ones. I'm so sad right now.
I'm sure everybody remembers it.
Thank you, Nora.
I'm sure it was great. I sell insurance for a living that this part sometimes goes past.
Kindergarten's eighteen to twenty-three were the guidelines and then first and second was twenty, twenty-five. I wish they were changing that, but.
I would like to bring it up for you.
And for preschool, the recommendations are not to exceed seventeen for four-year-olds and sixteen for three-year-olds. Those are the guidelines that we currently have.
But this is really one of these setup guidelines, right? Initially, when you did your presentation.
Thank you for remembering that, Jerry.
Good job, Jerry, thank you.
If we end up going older, it means we've got to bring back a teacher and that, in my opinion, that's what we need to do.
But if we're at twenty-five in a first grade class, I think that's high.
But I know that twenty-five, yeah, you'd have to hire. I know that that's the guidelines and that's why I wanted to speak to that and I would like to revisit that, those guidelines.
Yeah, the tough thing is that small class is going to go through the grades and that was brought up before and then what do you do with that teacher every year from whatever grade they're in? That's, that's the toughest situation with small class too.
But when they do move to third grade, I think, I, I think that that would have to be a, you wouldn't have the little class going into third, you would, that's when you would say, okay, they're, they're ready to be able to be in a little bit larger group. But that's my, because that's, you know, and I, and that's where I was, when I was looking at your numbers and everything. That's what I would think.
Were you saying this is, this is a soft or a hard cut because it keeps on moving through the grades?
I think if you do it now, it's considered hard because you'd go to three sections in second grade, three sections in third, that for... second grade, three sections in third, that first grade would go back up to four, you know? I mean, so it just, that low, like, when I was hired here, I started in fourth grade. I was with that big group, remember the one-twenty-five group that came through? I moved to fifth grade the following year because I had to kind of follow the big group. So we've had a big group come through where we've moved the fifth or sixth section over with them. We've never had the small section come through where we're moving around somewhere.
How long has it been since we've had class sizes that big, twenty-three, twenty-five?
Oh, no, we're, we're at ninety to a hundred in all of our grades, except for these young ones.
Correct. How long has it been since, like, first grade class sizes have been that large? Have we ever had that large, twenty-three and twenty-five?
About your eighteen years and so it been when I was at the elementary, so at least twelve, thirteen years ago.
They've been that size in the past.
I don't understand that question.
I'm just wondering, you know, they're, they're there at one time, I'm just wondering, you know, how long we've been away from that, you know, our studies and looking ahead from back then and looking at how the classes have done now with smaller sizes versus larger sizes, you know, with...
We have one of the smallest home growths in the area. I mean, that's a big part of it. You know, we just, people are staying in their homes longer even after their kids are gone, so they're staying in that home, so a new family, you know, normally that progression, our realtors know that, but normally that progression changes.
I guess I'm wondering, there's probably no, it's not, maybe not a spirit question asked, but did they do better, any difference in performance when they were larger, when the classes were, say, even twenty-one, maybe twenty-two versus now we're at eighteen, correct? Those class sizes?
Oh, you mean the actual class size? No, we've never gone that high. I'm talking about the, the class itself being big.
Right, right.
No, we've, we...
Never have.
I taught fifth grade one year and we were at twenty-seven, twenty-eight one year.
Okay.
But I, I don't, are any of the elementary teachers remember? I don't think we've ever been bigger than that, have we? I don't think so.
Twenty-seven would be totally appropriate for a fifth grade class.
Yeah, and that's, I was teaching fifth at the time, so.
Yeah, we've never been close to the twenty-three, twenty-five for first grade.
For first grade. Have you ever been that big in first grade?
Other discussion?
Well, one thing I asked Beth is whether or not we'd have to cut any current staff to make this cut. We answered that, no, we shouldn't have to because of retirement.
Yeah, retirements are due by March one in our district and we do, we do have a retirement that came in, so that's, I guess, if there's a, a positive, I guess that's it, but.
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second to approve a 1.0 first grade reduction. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes by a five to one vote. To pigtail on that, I think Katie was trying to throw it at least two times. Can we just revisit those guidelines again and hopefully we can have an agenda item for the guidelines soon?
If you guys want to jot down this number, everything you reduce tonight is two-hundred and sixty-four thousand, one-hundred and forty-one dollars. Share the Google Doc with you again?
Probably be a good idea. So informational items at our next board meeting, we'll certainly be discussing that IMC reduction and anything else that would be germane to the board.
I think with all being said, and that's another maintenance costs that are going to be coming up that we're, I expect, I think we need to revisit some of the other recommended cuts.
Next board meeting. The recommended other cuts.
The debate, the cheerleading, every musical, they weren't addressed here.
I'd like to know where we're at, what percentage we're at with the cuts we've just approved tonight and also if some of the maintenance costs are accounted for somewhere else.
Sure. Well, the two sixty-four, you can use your sheet and go across and find that percentage, so we're close to the nine percent that we talked to, a little over that. It's going to be right between those two numbers. I think what Jerry's attesting to and kind of what I was talking to earlier is these unexpected, we do not have the roof, the showers, the sewer backup or the dishwasher currently budgeted for.
What's that number?
What's that?
Seventy-five thousand.
Right, almost.
According to what Dave gave for the number tonight.
Per item or for the whole thing?
So Dave and I met for a long time today trying to kind of figure out what we could do. We're going to bring it to facility first. We may have to put off resurfacing and we've talked about doing a third of the parking lot, a third of the parking lot, a third. I know, we're just trying to think of different ideas on how we're going to pay for these items. So I think that's what Jerry is referencing is we've got some items here that are not in the five-year plan. We did go through what recyclable paper products would cost instead of a dishwasher. It's about seventy-four hundred dollars for the year. So, you know, you've got to think about, you know, and then the cost of water in the city, you know, maybe that would be a huge savings. I don't, I don't know for sure how much that would impact our water bills, but we will have a facility meeting very soon and then bring back that five-year rotation because I think it's going to need to be visited.
And then one of my other concerns too, piling on facilities, we had approved sixty-thousand-dollar preventive maintenance that hasn't been addressed thankfully, well, unfortunately, but thankfully at this point. So you actually could add that number on top of seventy-five thousand that should have been here, Mark, to take care of all the equipment that we just, we have deployed that's not getting done. It needs to get done. Where's that money, where's that money coming from? Jerry raises a good point. These are, some of these are going to be just some soft cuts going forward too and I think we need to look a little bit more aggressively at what's going to be coming down the pipe.
Now, those items, just so you know, don't impact staffing. The reason why you have to have this done is because, you know, paper one is your date that you need to be a bye-bye. The items that you're talking about could wait and we could wait and see where everything's at. There's no teachers associated to it. I don't think you need to be in a, a rush to do that. Maybe relooking at that five-year plan and making sure that everything's in there the way we need it to be, because I think we're beyond crack filling at this point in the parking lot. And the dishwasher is literally taped with, what's that black tape called? Electrical tape? But it passes, so we're going to keep having it work till it doesn't work anymore and then we've got a paper plan in place when it goes.
Always the problem is that this is a never-ending story for a district. These, these type of expenses, this year it's a, it's a freezer or whatever it happens to be and next year it's something else and it just nev, it just never ends. You attempt to budget for it, but then you pull money out of some other entity or some other way and it affects something else.
When I'm frustrated, things like the showers, I mean, those were done in two thousand and seven. I mean, why aren't the showers working? It's ridiculous, you know? Two thousand and nine, okay, you're right. Two thousand and nine, it's even worse. They shouldn't, they shouldn't be broken.
I was arguing the point that once we, once we move past something to revisit it again, just brings everything back all over again and maybe, were we too hasty in taking it off before? Or like Beth said, as long as we don't have to deal with it in a timely manner like April one, we can always come back for it. I'm not sure how anybody feels about it, but the, certainly the next agenda item for sure will be at our next meeting is that IMC discussion. And anything else you think is germane to what we need to accomplish here? So at this point, unless we have something else we need to discuss here, any board members have any information or news or reports that we haven't done?
No, but on your comment, I guess, you know, we have on rare occasion revisited by voted items and I, I don't think that's ever been a good productive process. I think what we visited is, and this was tough tonight. I mean, we went through it, I would almost say fairly quickly, but I think it was extremely tough. And the next meeting's going to be tough again and I think, Jerry, you raised a very big point. There are the things that maybe we do need to look at and that's why I was hesitant to pulling the IMC off tonight, because we do have seventy-five thousand dollars in additional costs we don't know about yet. To take something off almost prematurely and then maybe have to visit it later. Again, I don't, I hope we don't have to ever do that again. When we look at something, pull it off, put it back on, false hope, good hope, we've done it.
We've done it.
And it's just never good. So I'm not looking forward to anything, I didn't look forward to tonight. It was tough. Another next meeting is going to be as tough, even if there's less, it's never easy. But, yeah, you're right, Bob, there is always that, the facilities, the personnel, the students, what's right.
Good point. Okay, I think we are finished. Rob, you made a very good point here. Men have asleep very well when we got this and, you know, we want the community to know that these impact us a great deal. We get, we get emails from you and we have to review those and we have to get some validity in everybody's requests. Is it just because maybe you've got a child here and you want that child to be in the play and that's what makes the most sense for you? But we are taxed by the community to make cuts in proportion to what our revenue losses are. And as much as we dislike doing it because these are our neighbors, it's what we got voted in for. You're right, we, we lose sleep over that, Rob. I would look for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Rob, seconded by Jerry. Other discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. So, thank you for your time, everybody.